Good evening. Welcome to KNVT's 2014 Mountain View City Council Candidate Live Debate. We are very happy that you are joining us, and we have nine candidates vying for three open seats on our city council. It should prove to be an interesting couple of hours as we ask questions that were mainly gathered by residents here in the city of Mountain View. Before we begin the debate, we will have each of our candidates briefly introduce themselves for about one minute so you can get to know who they are before we jump into the questions. And we will start from my left, starting with Lisa.
I'm Lisa Maticek. I'm running for city council because I'm concerned about the quality of life in Mountain View. As I campaign, residents are reinforcing that they too are deeply concerned. Things like heavy traffic, the lack of parking, bicycle safety, the rapid pace of growth, and more. Some no longer go downtown because they can't find a parking space, and some are wondering if it's time to leave Mountain View. As your council member, I will make retaining the character of Mountain View and providing a great quality of life my top priorities. The projects currently in the works to reduce vehicle traffic will take time to come to fruition, so in the meantime, we should slow office growth until we have the infrastructure catch up with the pace of growth that we've had. In addition, we need to revisit our parking standards and have additional parking downtown so that cars don't spill over into the residential neighborhoods. We need to be thoughtful about growth, not just in some areas, but in all of Mountain View. I look forward to digging into these topics tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go down the line.
I'm Jim Neal. My primary issues that I want to work on for you are having affordable housing, preserving neighborhoods, dealing with parking and traffic issues, and definitely saving the milk pail. I hold an MBA from NDNU with an emphasis on finance, so I understand a lot about the city's finances, and I've attended almost every single city council meeting and almost every single EPC meeting. So I'm very familiar with the issues that are affecting our city. And I hope that on November the 4th, I will earn your vote, and I'm looking forward to discussing the topics tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
Great. Good evening. My name is Ellen Comay. As current Planning Commissioner and the Vice Chair, I've made it a point to listen, make myself available, and seek feedback from residents. And this has informed my vision, which I want to continue as your member on the city council. My family has roots dating back to the 1930s, and I'm a third-generation Mountain View resident. My grandparents were gardeners and then had a flower-growing business, and I seek to also stay here. As we look at the city, I'm thinking about balanced growth, economic development that maintains our diversity, and with housing and development projects, and transportation and infrastructure to support efficient multimodal modes of transportation. I have a professional toolkit to lead the city with my experience in city, county, and federal experience. I look forward to getting to know the questions here tonight.
Thank you. Ken?
Hi. My name is Ken Rosenberg, and my wife and I moved to Mountain View about 18 years ago to start a family. About 13 years ago, I became very involved in leadership positions and groups that work for the betterment of our city, including the Human Relations Commission, the Downtown Committee, the Old Mountain View Neighborhood Association, and the Chamber of Commerce. And there are six others that you may see on my website, mountainviewken.com. I am described by those that have worked with me as being unifying, collaborative, and inclusive, a style of leadership that I intend to bring to city council. I'm also known for creating the Civility Roundtable Discussion Series. It is an award-winning event that brings together Mountain View residents to talk about the most challenging and complex issues that we collectively face. That's why improving the dialogue between the resident and the city is a campaign priority of mine, along with traffic, land use, and housing. And I'm happy to announce that today I received the endorsement of the Palo Alto Daily Post. They have joined the list of over 75 Mountain View leaders and organizations that have endorsed my campaign. I hope that you see things similarly and vote for me this election cycle.
Thank you, Ken.
Good evening. My name's Pat Showalter, and it's been my good fortune to be on the -- to be a resident of Mountain View for 30 years. It's also my good fortune to be first on the ballot. I served on the --
(laughing)
I served on the Planning Commission for nine years during the dot-com boom and bust, and I'm a civil engineer that specialized in water resources management. On city council, I think we need to work to approve more housing, improve traffic management, particularly making streets safer for bikes and pedestrians. We need to work together with our businesses and our neighboring cities to solve shared problems. We need to protect our environment and prepare for climate change impacts. Today, I received the good news that Anna Issue has endorsed me, and she joins a broad range of people such as Assemblyman Rich Gordon, Carl Guardino, Joe Semidion. So please go to my website, votepatchshowalter.com, and learn more, and I look forward to the conversation we're going to have tonight.
Thank you. Mercedes?
Hi. My name is Mercedes Salem. I'm running for Mountain View City Council because I want to see residents of Mountain View thrive. As your councilwoman, my priority is to preserve and improve community, our neighborhoods, and our quality of life. I will protect and increase our open space, and will work to make our city environmentally more sustainable. I will focus on the programs we need for child development, for keeping families in Mountain View, and for empowering seniors in our community. My background has prepared me well to serve as your councilwoman. My work experience is in technology and public sector. I earned a law degree and a bachelor's degree from Santa Clara University, and I understand the pressures facing our city today. And I am able to bring sound judgment when making financial and policy decisions. I am the only candidate who has worked in both high-tech at companies like Cisco, Fujitsu, Synopsys, and as well as NASA Ames Research Center, and in public policy as Legislative Council in the House of Representatives. I've been endorsed by the Santa Clara Democratic Party as well as many other elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Greg Unanks, and my wife and I live just down the street here on West Middlefield for the last 16 years. Since retiring from Lockheed Martin in 2011, I focused my energies on civic endeavors to include the Board of Directors for Stevens Creek Trail, Restoration Advisory Board for Moffett Field, and as the chairman of the city's Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I was compelled to run for city council by the crisis conditions and traffic congestion, the soaring housing prices, the growing gap between the rich and the low-income working families, and especially diminishing life prospects for our younger middle-class generation here in Mountain View. In summary, I'm running for council to be a pragmatic voice concerning the tough issues that face Mountain View, and I'll work to make our city and our region a better place to live for all. I humbly offer Mountain View my extensive experience, my world-class education, and my down-to-earth common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. If you're okay with the high cost of housing, don't vote for me. If you think traffic's all right in Mountain View, then I'm not your candidate. I'm Lenny Siegel, and I'm fighting for a balanced Mountain View. In the 1970s, I was part of the community effort to preserve our old Mountain View area. Since 1981, I've been leading the oversight of the toxic cleanup at Moffett Field and our local Superfund sites. In 1996, I led the fight to stop midnight air cargo at Moffett Field. 2005, I formed the Safe Hangar One Committee. And this year, I formed the Campaign for a Balanced Mountain View. I invite you to join me and other candidates who are willing to fight for housing in North Bay Shore and other employment areas to see that we have a more balanced Mountain View. We need it.
Thank you. And Margaret?
Good evening. I'm Margaret Caprillison. I have been a resident over 45 years. My husband and I have reared our family here, our family of four, and I was involved in community activities and the children's activities, but I have also worked for Hewlett-Packard and Genentech. And I was a graduate of Leadership Mountain View and on the board of the YMCA, and received the Distinguished Service Award from that organization. The reason I want to run for city council is because, having been a candidate in 2012, I realized that I wanted to learn more about the city's business. So I've made that my goal in the last two years on the Environmental Planning Commission. And now I realize what we can do to really look at how we can attack housing, attainable housing. And that means housing that people can afford from the low income to the medium income. We have plenty of high-income housing here, so I will work for that, plus the open space and good alternative mode transportation. I look forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've already spoken to our candidates ahead of time to let them know what some of the ground rules are, so there will be no fighting, no punching, no pair-pulling, for those who haven't.[620.07][620.07](laughing) And most of our questions tonight have come from those of you who are watching tonight, those of you who have submitted questions over the past month that you wanted to have asked to the council candidates. So with that, we will start off with an easy one and work our way down. So first, how many years have each of you lived in Mountain View? And please let us know if you are a renter or a homeowner. I'll start with Lisa.
I've lived in Mountain View for 15 years. I was a renter for eight years, and I'm a townhouse owner for the past seven years.
Okay. And we'll just go down the line and keep it easy.
Okay. I've lived in Mountain View for eight years. I'm a short timer, and I also am a renter.
I've lived in Mountain View the last three years. I actually moved back from graduate school because my grandparents were sick. Our family nursery actually moved down to Morgan Hill, so I split my time between Morgan Hill and Mountain View, and now I am a renter.
My wife and I moved to Mountain View in 1997, so about 17, almost 18 years ago. And we bought our first house, and we've been living here. We're now in our third Mountain View house.
I've lived here for 30 years in the same house, and I'm a homeowner.
I've lived here for approximately four years, but my family has lived here off and on for many decades, and my roots go back to when I worked at NASA Ames Research Center over 20 years ago.
Yeah, I've lived here in Mountain View for 16 years. I've lived in the valley for over 30 years, and I'm a homeowner, own a townhouse just down the street in Middlefield.
I've lived in Mountain View for 42 years, and my wife and I bought our house on Loretto Street in 1979.
I've lived in Mountain View for 48 years, and my husband and I moved into our transition house, but we just forgot to transition.[746.94][746.94](laughing)
So now I'm going to actually direct this question towards the renters. Referencing the Mountain View Voice's September 26 article titled "No Appetite for Rent Control Among Council Candidates," the Silicon Valley Community Foundation took to social media and said the following. "Mountain View's population consists of 60% renters. In a city council election where three of the candidates are renters themselves, this is the reaction when all the candidates were asked about the possibility of a rent stabilization ordinance to help with skyrocketing rents in the city," end quote. What are your thoughts on their reaction? Any other renters want to chime in? Okay. All right, Ellen, I'm gonna pick on you.
I saw the look.[801.73][801.73](laughing) So obviously, it's a tough issue. You know, over 50% of my income goes towards rent, so I understand. But I think, at least on Planning Commission, we've been trying to look at alternatives to rent control. I think the idea at rent stabilization or rent control is a noble one, but unfortunately, as we've seen in larger cities and jurisdictions, for example, you know, we could look to the north in San Francisco, they still have an issue of affordability with their housing. So the alternatives we've looked at is creating more ownership opportunities, which are also below market rate, which we approved on Planning Commission. We've also, coming back to city council, I believe at the October 21st meeting, is looking at perhaps increasing the housing impact fees.
Yeah?
As far as rent control, I believe that that's only a temporary solution. Basically, I've lived in San Francisco on three separate occasions, and on each occasion, every time you move, you're still paying the market rent. So you're either stuck living in one place for a very long period of time, which may or may not suit your needs, or you wind up moving into another place and then having to start from scratch. So while I think that would help a very small number of people, I don't think that that's a viable solution. I think a better solution is trying to limit the amount of house -- I'm sorry, limit the amount of office that's being built that's adding to the discrepancy between the jobs and housing, and making sure that residents can obtain jobs, local residents can obtain jobs within the city that pay more money that help them to afford the housing.
Mercedes?
So this is an issue that's very important to me, and it goes back to why I want to be in the race, because increasing rents inhibit residents from thriving. And I've thought about this a lot, and I've engaged in conversations with city officials. And I believe that Mountain View needs to raise the impact fees and have that money go to employer-assisted housing programs, whether we create one ourselves or we give money to, let's say, Silicon Valley Housing Trust. We already give about $150,000 to the trust, but I think we can give more. We're lucky enough to be in amazing financial shape, and we, by raising the impact fees, we will be able to afford to give more to Silicon Valley Housing Trust to create employer-assisted housing programs for Mountain View residents. These programs have been very successful in different parts of the country, and they will assist people to get home loans, to pay off second mortgages, and rental assistance. Another program we need to have in Mountain View, whether we do it internally with the city or we couple with, let's say, Community Services Agency, is to have a rental support program or rental advocacy, which would consist of being able to go there for the neediest of the needy, for rental support, utilities to support, and tenant advocacy. I've heard too many stories of people's rents going up $700, or sometimes even doubling or tripling, and that's not acceptable. We can't get to--
I'm gonna cut you off for a second, because I do want to know if any of the homeowners have a differing opinion.
Yes, I'd like to just chime in. I don't think the Voice got my position just right, because I am in favor of a rent stabilization program. There is a way to crafting that within California law. There is some very stringent limitations of what you can do and can't do in California law, but there is a way of doing rent stabilization. As a property owner, I'm protected from increases in property tax by Proposition 13. Renters have no protection at all, and I think it'd be fair, at least, to try and limit the increases in rent for a given renter, and again, having it reset when you go to a new place and it resets to the market value. But I think that right now, knocking on doors, I'm finding that renters for a good part of the city are scared of getting the letter from the landlord saying, "I'm gonna raise your rent by fill-in-the-blank, because you don't know what it's gonna be," and then they're gonna have to make a life-changing decision about whether they can stay here or whether they have to move and take their kids out of school and so forth. So I think it's just from a degree of fairness, so we should at least have the discussion on rent stabilization in the city.
So I have a kind of a follow-up question to that to anyone that hasn't responded yet. There is a sense among some renters that they probably won't participate in voting because they feel like they're not gonna live here long enough to have any impact on who they vote for or not. What would you say, homeowners, to those renters who are feeling like, "What's the point of even participating in this process, because I'm probably gonna get priced out in a couple of years?" Pat, I saw your hand. And then we'll go to Ken.
Well, in local elections, people's vote really counts a lot, and if you look about who wins or loses, it's normally just a couple of hundred votes. And so for renters to say, "My vote doesn't count," it's just not true. Everybody's vote counts, and I really urge everybody to vote, because, you know, whether -- I mean, we're all citizens of the community that we live in, whether we're here for 30 years or three months, and it's important to take part. So I think it's important for people to vote.
Ken?
I agree with what Pat just said. I'll take a little bit of exception to renters don't vote, because when you look at their voter registration data that we have as candidates, a tremendous amount of the people live in the rental facilities, and I can't promise you that they all are going to vote in this particular election, but looking at past history as an indicator, very many of them do. I think it's challenging as a candidate to actually reach the renters. We can't get into their buildings and talk to them one-on-one if you're canvassing. The only way to really do it is via the community forum like this or by mail. And so following on what Pat said, I really need to encourage all renters to be participants in our democracy. They have no right to complain if they don't vote.
Okay. Does Melissa want -- oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to say something, Margaret?
Just a quick reminder, those of you who remember President by the name of John F. Kennedy, he actually beat Nixon by one vote in each precinct. So every single vote counts, and particularly in a local election where there are so many important issues, you've got to look to the candidates to really take your issues seriously and to collaborate and come up with an innovative solution.
Thank you. So we're gonna go into our next question, and it's specifically geared towards this group, because all of you are newcomers, and you will be first-time electives into these three open seats. So voter who lives in the 94040 district asked the question, "How many council meetings have you attended in the past year?" And I think for some that are asking this question, it's more of, are you going after the office and just now starting to get involved in the process, or are you someone that's been going through it for a while? So I'm gonna start with Margaret and work the other way around.
So I was going to the city council meetings before the 2012 election, because I wanted to know exactly what was involved in the city council, the issues they dealt with and that sort of thing. And even after I was appointed to the Environmental Planning Commission, I continued to go to the council meetings every single week, because I want to make sure that the process we have and the recommendations we make from the EPC are good and that it really is helping the council members make a really good decision. So I have been attending all the council meetings plus the EPC meetings since before 2012.
Thank you. Lenny?
Yeah, I guess I've attended about a dozen council meetings. It's not just attending meetings. You've got to actually download the documents, read the staff reports, wade through the environmental impact reports, and write letters, because when you go to a council meeting, you've only got two or three minutes usually to speak out, and you're gonna -- sometimes you just have to write letters and communicate with the council in other ways than just being at the meetings.
Right. And I would submit too, before we move on to Greg, that I would say attending meetings will also include being able to watch them online, so they have that capacity now, because you can't always physically be there. So I will allow you to add that component to attending.
Yesterday night, I watched the council meeting instead of the giant skate come out there.
Whoa. You might get some feedback on that.[1358.33][1358.33](laughing) All right, Greg, go ahead.
So anyway, I have been attending the council meetings, particularly in the last couple of years. I wouldn't say I've been to every one, but I've been to them very frequently. Prior to that, I've been involved, I'd say, in a sort of a random way, particularly when it got into bike and pedestrian issues, I would go there and make my two-minute or three-minute plea for getting something done, in some cases successfully. But as I've gotten involved more in the BPAC Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and particularly running for council this past year, I've been attending almost every one since the beginning of the year.
Mercedes?
I've attended council meetings prior to filing for this race, and I've gone and spoken at council meetings. When I don't have something I want to say to the city council itself, I will generally watch it online, and I make a point to do that, because I care about what's going on. I'm a renter, and every place I've lived, I've always voted as a renter, and I don't see any difference here. I think that renters should vote and should be more engaged, and I'm really proud of the city for live-streaming the city council meetings.
Okay.
Since I decided to run for city council, I guess that was about mid-March, I've been coming to the meetings pretty religiously, but before that, it was much more hit or miss, depending on whether there was a topic I was interested in. I have, though, really kept up over the years through the League of Women Voters newsletter. We have an observer, and she writes up a little article about every meeting, and they're very succinct, and I find them really helpful.
Ken?
Yeah, in terms of quantifying how many I've been to, I don't know. I probably stream more than I watch, excuse me, more than I have attended, including the July 1st meeting where we were talking about the San Antonio Center, and I was watching it from my hotel room in New York City. One of the things that -- the implication is, if you're not in this question, if you're not going to city council meeting, you're not interested or you're not dedicated enough, I take issue with that, because speaking only for myself, I'm on four different boards at the moment, and there's a lot of energy and time going to that, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Human Relations Commission, Peninsula Lee Theater Enrollment Task Force and whatnot. A lot of times, the information that comes out of council gets fed through us, especially at the Chamber of Commerce, through our political action committee, so our, what's called our business, BIP, the BIP Committee, which I'm now blanking on.
You're gonna get in trouble for that, just a little.
Yes, I will. Sorry, Oscar.[1520.83][1520.83](laughing) At any rate, so I think we're all involved in our own ways.
Ellen?
Great. So what's been really exciting for me is that I've seen Mountain View shift to being open and transparent, so there's lots of ways to get involved and get information on council meetings, not only by streaming or being there physically, but through, you know, social media, through getting input online. We have our Open City Hall, putting issues on there. So definitely been engaged. Part of our role as planning commissioners is making recommendations to council, and when you're able to be there in person or watch online, read the documents, that informs you of council's direction and feedback to the feedback you're giving, which I think is really important as we're moving big issues through the city.
Okay.
All right. So I've only missed two meetings this year. One was for my 50th birthday, and the other was for a meeting for July 8th that was scheduled on very short notice, and I already had a vacation planned that I wasn't able to cancel. Other than that, for the last three years, I've attended almost every single city council meeting, EPC meeting, including all the study sessions, and I actually think it is very important to be there, not just for the interesting things, but for the day-to-day things, because that's exactly what the council does. They deal with all types of issues, day in and day out, and unless you're at those meetings and listening to the residents express what they're interested in and telling you what they want and need, how are you going to know that? How are you gonna have that experience? I've done this while I was finishing my master's degree, while I was working eight hours a day, and while I was commuting four hours a day on the train, so I also had a very busy schedule, but I made sure that I made time to be at those council meetings, including changing my work-at-home day to Tuesdays.
And Lisa?
I have been attending or watching city council meetings for about the last seven to eight years.
I'm sorry.[1638.71][1638.71](laughing)
It's actually been fascinating.
Good answer.
And the reason I've been doing that is because I have a strong interest in local government and what's going on in the city. And it was very important to my neighborhood to understand how different council members were thinking, what positions they were taking, and you get a lot of the nuances when you attend in person, so that's really important to me. And since I've been on the Environmental Planning Commission now for the past five years, I also try to either listen to or watch or attend the city council meetings, because I do want to see how, what the EPC does and what the council does, either is consistent or not consistent. And so going to those meetings or watching those meetings is, again, very important. It helps me be a better planning commissioner by watching what the city council does.
Okay, so now I'm gonna pick on Ellen, because she actually segued into my next question, when she spoke about, you know, seeing what's coming down the pipeline with council meetings. So Cherie, who lives in the Jackson Park neighborhood, asked the following question. "Will you, if elected, will you vote for Mountain View to move to green electricity by supporting CCA, which is the Community Choice Aggregation, when it comes to council in early 2015?" So first, we'll see if you know what that is, and then how you vote on it.
Thank you. Yes, I am familiar with the CCA. I actually have been attending a couple meetings that Mountain View has been having over in Sunnyvale. Both cities have been working together on the issue and looking into it. Early 2015, I think that there's a lot of information on both right now, and I am trying to absorb both of them. I actually had a conversation earlier this week with the utility company, trying to ask them for more information, because it came up, I believe, on Monday's forum. So I am, you know, open. I think that it's really important for us to be thinking about how we can address this issue, so--
Okay. Anyone else want to chime in?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in. I'm a life member of IEEE. IEEE is the Institute of Electrical Electronic Engineers, and CCA is a fascinating attempt to shift more rapidly to clean energy sources, and what that does is it enables the suppliers of clean energy-- And what that does is it enables the suppliers of clean energy to capitalize and, getting contracts, they allow them to get financing and be able to capitalize and build up their capacity much faster than they would otherwise. So it's a fascinating restructuring of how you build the infrastructure to supply energy to the nation, for that matter. But it starts piece by piece, and I think what we're doing between Sunnyvale and Mountain View is pretty exciting. And look at me, if the other areas up north, Marin County, I believe, are moving into that, it's a very exciting transition into, hopefully accelerate us making the move into green sources.
Lenny?
Yeah, I also strongly support community choice aggregation. But I also support something that Mountain View's been in the leadership on, is that distributed solar power that is photovoltaics on our roofs, because that's a good way you can put in renewable energy without using up any more land. So I bought in as one of 115 families in 2007, and I check my solar output almost every day. But we also need to figure out a way that rental properties can do that, because the people who pay the bill aren't the people who own the roof.
Let's take one more from this side, since we had our A2 over here. Lisa?
So from what I know of CCA, it sounds like a great opportunity and has a bigger impact than all the other things that we could potentially do here in Mountain View to reduce our carbon footprint. So it sounds like a great opportunity. I'm very supportive. I can't wait to explore it more and move forward.
All right. We're going to go to another topic, and we might come back and revisit it. I know, I know. So now we're going to talk about building and development, one of our favorite topics here in Mountain View. So Jim, who lives here in Mountain View, wants to know, "What is the maximum height you would allow for new buildings in Mountain View, and where would you allow those heights?" Come on, Jim. Come on.
Oh, I thought you said that was the person that was asking the question.
Second Jim.
Okay, so I get to ask and answer the question.
Yes.
Okay. So the answer is, it depends, because not all heights of buildings are appropriate for all areas. For instance, at 801 El Camino, I don't think that a four-story building is appropriate there, because most of the housing that surrounds it are single-family homes that are only one and two stories. So I think having a project that towers over the housing that's in the area would be inappropriate. I would say for an apartment building, I'd say a maximum of four stories, again, depending on the area. For other buildings like a hotel, six stories, but that would have to be limited to one or two areas. I wouldn't want to see a string of six-story hotels all up and down an avenue.
Ken?
So the answer, it depends, as insufficient as that is, is probably the best answer, because it depends on where this is going. I do want to add that, you know, the concept of the general plan is asking for smart growth, which is basically higher-density housing along transit corridors and a more urban feel to it. And that means higher housing than we're accustomed to. So the transition in time for people to get accustomed to the change requires a community dialogue to make sure that everybody's aware that this is coming, this is changing. When it comes to the North Bay Shore, if we allow housing out there, I would definitely allow for higher buildings than, say, on El Camino or something like that, without a doubt. But you have to take a look into the depth of the area. There's parts of El Camino, for example, that a two-story place would probably be inappropriate. But there's also parts of El Camino closer to Ortega, for example, that's appropriate for an eight. So you really have to be sensitive to the surroundings, and we'll look at it that way, case by case.
Who else over here?
Mercedes?
So the first thing they teach you when you take real estate and property law and law school is that every piece of property is unique. So the answer, it depends matters, is the right answer. But it really matters that we preserve our neighborhoods as well. So I think that on El Camino, let's say at the 801, it's zoned up to go up to four stories. Three is good, but if we do four, the tallest part should be on El Camino itself and then get smaller, because it does back up into neighborhoods. I don't want to see El Camino turning into some sort of concrete canyon. I don't think that's good for Mountain View. But we have to make exceptions in certain areas, like Moffett Gateway, if, when a hotel goes up there, it can be much taller.
Go ahead, Margaret.
I think these are the types of discussions we have been having for the precise plan in the three change areas we have been looking at. And so we are, we're looking at a range of high-density housing because of where it is, and we don't have enough land to really sprawl out anymore. So the smart growth absolutely is high-density buildings. And I think the, you know, certainly when we are integrating into a neighborhood, as was mentioned, we need to make sure that we are not imposing the new project on people's privacy. So that's very important. So I think that these are the types of considerations that we are looking at in all the change areas, and very, very sensitive to how do we take smart growth and really blend it in and make it a part of the community and not having it be a standalone, really, really tall building that would not fit in to a particular neighborhood.
So we need to embrace, "It depends."
Yes.
So we're going to have one last question before we go into our break, and I think is an interesting one, is submitted by Winona. And she says, "Traffic is snarled, air pollution high, and waistlines are growing." She would not be talking about me. "Many citizens think it's time to make the city better for walking and bicycling. What do you think? If you agree with them, what would you do to make this a reality?" So yeah, Greg, I'm looking right at you.
Yep, okay.
Start us off.
I know Winona, I know who she is. You don't tell me. That's another question. Yeah, this is something that's very important to me. That's one of the reasons I got involved with the B-PAC, is that for every person that rides a bike or walks, is not driving their car, obviously. Decreases the congestion and actually gets people where they go, and there's all kinds of good health benefits and psychological benefits that go along with that. So investing in our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, I think, is key to growing the city. And you're also finding a lot, when I'm going around knocking on doors and also tabling it, like Stevens Creek Trail events, you run into a good number of younger people that are overtly not owning a car. They structure their lives so they don't own a car, they don't want to own a car. And they're riding their bikes or they're walking wherever they want to go. And they're looking for places they can live, where they can get access to where they work. I live in, like I say, just down the street here, and there's a bicycle tunnel bridge that goes over 101. People are moving into our neighborhoods specifically because of that bridge, because they can then walk to Google and LinkedIn and Intuit. So it's a, I live about a mile and a quarter from Google headquarters by way of that bridge. So it's a very easy bike ride to do that.
Anybody else want to chime in on that one?
Oh, look at that. Okay. Pat?
Well, I'd like, I think that this is one of the subjects that we really all agree on. Everybody thinks that we need to strengthen the bike network, and some of us maybe think it more, but I mean, this is one of the things that we all agree on. Mountain View has been saying for many years that we want to be a bike and pedestrian-friendly city, and we've taken strides to do that, but there's a lot that's left to do. In my neighborhood, we have an opening to the Stevens Creek Trail, and the growth of that trail has been controversial from time to time. I remember about, oh, six or eight years ago, when the last segment was being put in, there were a group of neighbors who just said, you know, it was going to harm the property values, it was going to create all these problems. And now, you can't find a flyer, a real estate flyer, that doesn't say on it, "Access to the Stevens Creek Trail." I mean, these things are just great amenities for all the reasons that Greg said. You know, it's great for our health, they're fun, they get us places we need to go. I mean, there's just hardly any downsides, except we need more of them.
Does anyone have an additional thing to add to that? Jim?
Yeah, so as someone who walks or takes public transit almost 99.9% of the time, and has done so for the last three years, I've walked all over Mountain View. As a matter of fact, just during this campaign, I've lost 15 pounds walking in the district. So I understand what it's like to try and walk. And one of the things we need to do is separate the modes of transportation, whether it's walking, biking, or even driving a car, to make sure that they conflict as little as possible and to make it as safe as possible for everyone. One thing is having the dedicated bike lanes in safe areas. Another is an idea that I've had for pedestrian over crossings at very busy intersections that would help to keep pedestrians safe, especially during times of high transit. So I think those are the types of things we should be looking at.
We'll take one more response. Who did I want to pick? All right, Mercedes, Margaret.
Thanks, Lisa. So I lived without a car for five years, and I never even thought about having a car during those times. But I didn't live in Mountain View. And in Mountain View, I don't bike or walk, and I'm a person who loves to do that. And the reason is, I don't feel safe. I live in the Sylvan Dale neighborhood, and I don't live too far away from downtown. It's a great kind of walk to go down there and back, but it's dangerous. I have to cross El Camino, I have to cross 85, and it's tough to get back at night. And I worry about the drivers potentially, you know, hitting pedestrians and bikers. So safety is a very big issue for me, and I think we need to have more buffered bike lanes, and wherever we put bike and pedestrian lanes, they should be separate, so it's safe for all.
Awesome. And with that, I just want to let you know that you are watching live coverage of the 2014 Mountain View City Council Candidate Debate. That's a mouthful. Coming from the studios here at KMBT 15, remember that you are going to vote on Election Day, November the 4th. We're going to take a short break and be back in about five minutes. Stay tuned for more insightful answers from your city council candidates.
KMBT 15 is your community media center. We are here to provide hands-on training, equipment, and resources to you to express your voice over many distribution platforms. Since 1982, KMBT 15 has been providing media resources to the community. Yearly, we train over 300 youth through our video camps. Hundreds of scouts come yearly to take tours and learn about media in order to earn their journalism badges. We offer classes in all areas of media, from video to editing, photography, graphics, video chats, and much more. Training can also be done on location. KMBT 15 has a community message board that runs daily, providing information to the community about upcoming events. We also provide tools to nonprofits to create dynamic video messaging quickly with an online system. We offer sponsorship opportunities to businesses to support our efforts in creating local and educational programs, from high school and middle school sports to Project Connect, a digital media learning initiative. KMBT 15 provides an array of innovative media production services to create compelling media for businesses, nonprofits, and individuals. By hiring our professional staff, you are helping us to support our mission to provide resources and educational opportunities to the community. KMBT 15 works with schools to provide digital literacy training for teachers, students, and parents. We provide after-school opportunities like MV Youth Productions, which gives students hands-on digital video and team-building skills. KMBT 15 provides coverage of graduations, sports, and local arts. KMBT 15 brings you local coverage from government meetings and elections to ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings. KMBT 15 is your distribution resource over the air, online, and via streaming. We have a potential viewership of over 400,000 throughout the entire Bay Area via Comcast Channel 15 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. We also have a strong viewership online, reaching millions on YouTube, and a Roku channel that streams our content and has a potential reach of over 5 million viewers. So when you think of KMBT 15, remember, we have a full production facility, production truck, and an award-winning staff here to support your needs.
Trisha's having a sleepover tonight. Can I go?
I wonder about Lucy's friends. What should I say? I know you're only 10, but one of these days, a friend will offer you a drink. And alcohol, at your age, can lead to so many things, none of them good.
So can I go to the sleepover?
Lucy, I want you to promise me something.
I finished my homework.
Bigger promise. If there's any drinking, I want you to say, "No thanks, not my thing."
Mom!
I promise you, your real friends won't care. Deal?
Sure.
Really?
I promise, Mom.
They really do hear you.
Did you pack your toothbrush?
For tips on how to start the talk, visit underagedrinking.samsa.gov. A public service message from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
All right, welcome back to our live coverage of the 2014 Mountain View City Council Candidate Debate, coming to you live at the studios here at KMBT. And we're going to pick back up with some more questions that were sent in by you. I've created a false sense of security for those in the audience right now. They think I'm asking easy questions, but the other ones are coming. So we're going to continue on the bike and walking traffic. So someone wants to know, "Do you support protected bike lanes?"
Absolutely.
Ken?
Yeah, absolutely. We talked earlier about the safety aspect of walking and/or biking, and the reality is, people don't walk or bike if they feel like their life isn't going to be in danger. Anecdotally, I took my son on a bike ride all the way down the Stevens Creek Trail from our house to Shoreline Park, and during traffic hours on a weekday, I said to him, now he's 13, I said to him, "We're going to take Shoreline Boulevard all the way home." And he looked at me with trepidation, and he said, "All right." And I said, "You're going to stay in front of me and let's just go." And so we did, and there was a lot of shouting out directions and so forth, especially as we went over the freeway in the Central Expressway area. And we got home safely, thank goodness, and I asked him, "How was that?" And his response was, "That was terrible." And so if the children are picking up on that, then we need to do something about it. So protected bike lanes, buffers, the protected intersections and so forth, these are all essential ingredients to a good bike program.
Just out of curiosity, does anyone disagree with that? Is there anyone that feels like, no?
No.
Good. Let's move on. So John, who I'm sure is no relation to the Jim that asked the question earlier, asks, "I have heard that council work has been estimated to be 30 hours plus a week. How will you schedule this in with the rest of your life? And I'm particularly interested to hearing from those who are working full-time." Lisa?
Yeah, I think I know what it takes and the level of effort that's required to be a city council member. On the planning commission, I spend probably eight to 10 hours preparing for the meeting. We usually have a stack that we're going through, you're meeting with folks, you're visiting the site. It is a huge effort. But my perspective is, if you're signing up for something like that, you need to give it your full effort. So it can sometimes be a challenge, but, you know, I have a full-time job, and I've made the planning commission work, so I can make the city council work.
I want to expand on that a little bit. So do you work from home? Are you actually going into an office somewhere? How does that full-time job look?
I go into an office. Actually, I'm working part-time while I'm campaigning, but I will be going full-time later. And yeah, I go into the office. I just, I have a ton of energy, I'm willing and able to do it all.
Now, before the next person answers, I also want to make sure that those, that you all understand it, and that the audience does as well, is that it's not just about a council meeting every other Tuesday. There are committees, multiple ones, that council members will be at There are committees, multiple ones, that council members will be asked to partake of, and I'm sure most of those are during the day. So Ellen, as someone who I know works full-time and struggle, how do you add in another 30?
I think Alicia's trying to allude that I work more than 40 hours a week, which I do. You know, I, as Lisa mentioned, with Planning Commission, we are already putting in a significant amount of time to research, to meet with residents. And so what it is, because it's not only, I think, council meetings or committee meetings, I know that council members are also on regional boards, or they're part of the California League of Cities. And so there are many roles that you can take on as a council member that adds to that 30 hours that was alluded to. But for myself, what I've decided to do is, I'm on other nonprofit boards, and that would mean stepping down from those nonprofit boards so that I could devote all my attention to being the most effective city council member.
Mercedes?
So I work for myself as a family practice attorney, so my time is a little bit more flexible. But I'm really not happy if I'm not very busy. As an undergrad, I worked 40 hours a week while taking 20 units, more than full load. As a law student, I worked full-time at Cisco and went to law school part-time the first year, and then I worked the whole time and went full-time because I could handle it. So that's no different. I have proven experience doing it, and I'm going to, I want to do it again.
Jim?
And as I mentioned earlier, I'm already pretty much doing that with both the city council and the EPC. What I do is, I download the documents onto my laptop, and then when I have my two-hour commute each way on the train, I'm able to read the documents and study them at that time, take notes, review things. And as far as the other commitments, the county and other area agencies that you have to interact with, I'm going to have to start driving.
So what about the non-commitments? And what I mean by that is, once you're an elected official, people will just walk up to you, whether you're at the grocery store, while you're having coffee, whether it's at Red Rock or Starbucks, and want your time. And that's something that has to be accounted for, too. I know when, usually when the mayor is in their role, they have a coffee with whatever creative name they have. But for the rest of you, I mean, that's a tasking situation to go from a private citizen to being on when you walk out the door until you get back home. Lenny?
Well, I don't think this will be that much of a change for me. I devote a lot of time to these issues, and I spend a lot of time talking to people in the community. So it's not a big deal. The only change for me is, I'm going to have to schedule some travel around Tuesday to make sure that I'm here at that time, because I serve on a lot of committees in Washington DC and visit communities all over the country. So I'll have to time my travel a little bit around the council's schedule.
So for those of you who are working full-time, and to a degree, part-time, do you have the full support of your current employer to make those time adjustments? I'm not picking on you, Ken, but...
Can I take that one?
Go for it.
By the way, to the council candidates, I'm retiring that story, so, after tonight, apparently. So yeah, I work in an industry that requires approval before you do any sort of what's called an outside business interest, whether it be working on a board of directors, or campaigning, or eventually becoming a city council person. And my employer actually signaled to me that they were unwilling to let me sit. So that was quite a battle for me to fight in order to win the privilege, just to be able to represent Mountain View citizens. But I did win the battle, and we have worked out a great agreement in terms of what I would have to do in terms of being a full-time employee of my company, which is Morgan Stanley, and be a full-time council member. So we have figured it out.
Okay. Ken?
Well, I guess I'm very lucky. I work for a government agency, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, and everybody there thinks local government is really important. So they're delighted that I'm giving this a try and very supportive of it. I've worked there for quite a while, so I have a pretty good treasure chest of vacation accrued, and I know that I'm going to be using it all up to go to various meetings that occur during the workday, and that's just fine. And I'll be able to flex my time to attend meetings as needed. But I think the reason that it's going to work for me is sort of twofold. One, my husband is retired, and he just does a fabulous job of taking care of domestic duties. So that frees me up wonderfully, and thank you very much. Then the other one, I think, is, it has a lot to do with what fascinates you. And I think, pretty much like everybody else here, I suppose, that the work that the city council does is fascinating.
So for those of you who actually are elected, I will come back and ask you the same question, seeing what the difference is. And I'm ready to, oh my God, just so you know. I'm going to move on to another question, and this one will require you to suspend a little bit of belief, meaning the city charter. Several neighborhoods in Mountain View over the years have felt underrepresented on city council. Wagon Wheel, Monaloma, and anyone that lives along Moffitt Boulevard, just to name a few. As Mountain View continues to grow through development and people moving here, what are your thoughts on having council members elected at large, as they currently are, versus numbered seats or voting by district? See, he was waiting on it. Okay, Jim, go ahead.
So the fact is that it's not just a city issue, but I believe that there's a state regulation that, once the population reaches a size of 100,000, we're going to have to go to district elections anyway. So I think that that is going to happen. But I also think that anybody who, no matter where they live, they should be able to feel that they can talk to any person that's on the council or any candidate for council and feel like they are being represented. I think that as long as you keep those relationships open with people and make sure that you take time to go around to all the different areas of the city and let people know where you're going to be and when, and that you'll be there to address their concerns, I think that will help.
Lisa, I'm going to ask you, because I think, when I first met you years ago, it was a Wagon Wheel situation, and now you're here.
It was, and I didn't send in that question.
No, you didn't. No, I wrote that question. That was one of mine, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to have it the way it is now. It's nice to have city council members who are familiar with the entire city, the differences and the similarities between the different neighborhoods. And so I do have the expectation that council members know the entire city and represent everyone in those different communities. I think on the Planning Commission, I've certainly become much more familiar with all the different neighborhoods. You know, the great things, the challenges, and, you know, on the council, I expect the same thing.
So does anyone currently think that there are neighborhoods in the Mountain View community that are not being served as well as others?
I don't think it's really a matter of neighborhoods. I think Mountain View has to do a better job of serving our Latino constituents. A lot of people who don't speak English, and we don't make shows like this or the city council meetings available in Spanish. And if we want to reach out to more people, we should think about, it's not where they live, but who they are, if we want to involve them more.
Marty?
And I see that as I walk precincts, because often when I see someone and I want to approach them to talk with them, and they don't speak English, I'm very fortunate. I have my escort translator, and you can just see...
Escort translator?
Yes.
I like it.
My husband, just to be clear. Just to be clear.
So I was emphasizing escort, but you went there, so okay.
What can I say? But you can see, you can see the difference, because I really believe that we want our citizens to be engaged in whatever way they have a passion. I really, I really believe that, and it's one thing I like about Mountain View, because they will come forward and they say, "But you're not from my neighborhood." And I said, "But that doesn't matter, you still live in Mountain View." And so I don't think we should have districts or go to that point, because I think that we want to remain that tight-knit, diverse community that we all cherish. And so I want to make sure that we represent everybody, and I do represent a few neighborhoods anyway, because I have children that live there.
So is what, but is what Jim said accurate about hitting the $100,000 mark? I have that, but the $100,000... I need some money. But hitting that mark, is that accurate, that there's supposed to be some type of change that occurs?
I've never, I've never heard of that.
Not to my knowledge.
Because they have elections in San Francisco every few years, changing it back and forth.
Whether it is or it isn't, I believe that every single resident should be able to go up to any council member and ask for help or ask for advice, and that council member should service them. That's their duty and their responsibility. Another thing is, I agree with Lenny about serving underrepresented minority groups, as well as just underrepresented groups, like people that have mental health or behavioral health issues, as well as immigrants and refugees, and developmentally disabled individuals in our community.
Ken?
I just wanted to add to the conversation by saying, it actually, the nature of the question itself somewhat pains me, because it means that there are people here that are unhappy. And the job, I'm signing up for a job that will try to make people happier and make their lives better. I'm on the Human Relations Commission for this exact reason. These type of issues come up now and again, and it's the responsibility, not just of council, but Mountain View City and all of the residents of Mountain View to look out for each other. So we'll just add that a little bit.
So we'll go Ellen, Greg, and Pat.
Great, thank you. I think for myself, I'm going to take the root of the question as being one of engagement. And as somebody who was living in Waverly Park and recently moved into Willow Gate, I can understand that you can feel different based off of your neighborhood. But I think something that the city has tried to do is listen to this feedback. I know that the city recently hired a language services individual in the city manager's office to work with those various populations. And so I think it's also having maybe perhaps people who are renters on council. Right now, our council is made up entirely of homeowners, and I think that's also a variety of perspectives that can be helpful. For myself, when I was walking precincts, I was walking by a family, and they said in Spanish, "Why are you not talking to us?" Luckily, I'm Puerto Rican, Chinese, and Japanese, and I was able to respond in Spanish. "Do you vote?" And they said, "No, but he does." And I said, "Great, let me talk to him, and can you register?" So I think it's just creating that dialogue, and that's the spirit that I think Mountain View has, is it's this open, welcoming community, and making sure that as a council member, you continue that.
Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to, I think you alluded to that a little bit. You know, I'm from, as I found out, the wrong side of the tracks. We live on the north side of town, and there's definitely a feeling, when you go around knocking on doors, that there's some disengagement. There's a, the representatives on council, even though they're, I'm sure they're trying, don't understand what goes on in this north end of town with a higher concentration of rental units. And there's a distance, just a distance, that seems to be there. So, you know, we said a lot of good things, but there definitely is that sense, to some degree, on this side of town, that the council really doesn't represent us very well. And so there is that sentiment out there. So it usually is indicative that there is a problem.
Right. Because, I mean, because there's a sentiment to some degree amongst you right now. Some of you are running because you're renters, and you're saying, "It's all homeowners on council, so I'm running because I don't feel represented." So even if it's, you know, the goal of council as a whole to represent everybody, obviously there's always going to be a sense of, "What about me?", especially if it's something that you're seeing in your neighborhood, in your front yard, in your backyard. Was there someone else that wanted to respond on this?
Well, I was going to go back to the question about the districts or being at large. And I think, you know, I work in local government, and I visit a lot of different governments and see how they work. Some are, have districts, and some are at large. And it's just my general observation that there's a little bit of animosity that's a higher level when you have districts than when you're at large. And one of the things that's so great about Mountain View is, we have lots of city services. We get a lot of things figured out by our city council. And I think one of the reasons that we get a lot accomplished is because we have a tradition of working well together and being collaborative. And we've sort of seen that in this group. We're getting to know each other pretty well through this. And I think that being at large contributes to that.
Okay. Let's move, so speaking of things getting done, what are your thoughts on the recent changes in downtown parking? There are some questions that came in where folks felt like things were done reactively as opposed to proactively, specifically when it comes to Levi Stadium. We knew for over a year that this stadium was going to be built, and there was going to be impact, but it wasn't until the summer, just a few months ago, where discussions about what should happen with parking and time limits and the beloved farmer's market seemed to be a bit of a scramble. So I would like for each of you to chime in on how you feel about that. Do you think there were things that could have been done differently? Are you completely happy with the result? Are there things that you would change about it? I'm going to start on this end, and then work my way to Lisa.
So I think often, there is an expectation that everything is nirvana, and you will, it will happen as it should. So projecting, you know, that there would be this problem in downtown parking, there were also a lot of things in front of the council to, you know, to be resolved. And so, yes, I think we could probably have reacted to that a little bit sooner than later, but I think that there has always been a discussion about the parking. We didn't know how much VTA was going to charge, and we wanted to provide parking that would be comparable to that. We wanted to be sensitive to the residents by providing the residential parking permits. And all of this was kind of, as you said, a knee-jerk reaction, and one to try to respond to the Levi Stadium issue. And we learned from that. I think we don't always do things perfectly, but at least that we try to address it, and we learn from it, and I think that that's the way we're going to get better at doing these sort of things. So ideally, yeah, we could have reacted sooner, but the point is that we did react.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Lenny now.
Yeah, we got a late start, and some of us were worried about how it would work out, but I think the city's done a pretty good job of catching up. I live in Old Mountain View, and, you know, I think it's worked out pretty well. We're learning lessons, we're going to change it. And some of the lessons we're learning, we're going to be able to use to develop a residential parking permit for weekdays, where we have much more, from my perspective, much more of a parking problem, where people who are working downtown or going on Caltrain or VTA are parking in the neighborhood all day. And so I think we're going to learn something, and we'll be able to get there before too long. Yeah, I just echo that. I don't live downtown, so I wasn't, I'm not being, say, on the front lines of the parking problem, but I have observed it from a distance. And yes, I'll agree that we got a late start. There's a learning curve in city staff about how to manage a parking program. I think we could have got a much better start on that by learning lessons from Palo Alto and San Francisco. They've been grappling with these parking issues for a long time, and there's a lot of lessons to be learned there. So we could have learned a little bit quicker, I think. But as Lenny said, I think the end result right now is okay. I think there's a lot better technology out there that we could use to make parking a much easier process. I also think at some point in time, we're going to have to cross the threshold where we're going to start paying for parking.
Well, let's hope there's no colored zones involved, because that's what I hate about downtown Palo Alto. Mercedes?
You know, hindsight is 2020. Sure, we could have started earlier, we could have done better, but we did okay. Our parking problem downtown is really threefold. One, the business owners there that I've talked to have a hard time parking. Two, there's spillover into our neighborhoods, and the neighborhood associations, as well as the residents, are concerned. And three, it's hard for people to park when they want to come down there for arts and entertainment, recreation, and services. So we need to address these. We need to fix our parking permit issues. We need to fix the signage, it's confusing, make it more clear for people, and create additional parking so there isn't spillover into the neighborhoods surrounding Castro Street.
Okay.
Well, I think with respect to the parking issue with the Levi Stadium, it did seem to be done very, very quickly. But I thought that under the circumstances where the city staff got a lot of pertinent information that they needed to pull the program together, like, you know, how much they were going to charge and that sort of thing, they did pull it together quickly. And just the general principle of doing things with pilot projects is a really good principle. And just the general principle of doing things with pilot projects is a really good principle. You set up, you know, a system for a couple of years, and you try it, and you learn a lot from it, and you adjust accordingly and move forward. And I think that's, you know, it's a real good methodology, and it seems to be working well in this case. And in a year and a half, we'll have a lot more information to build a much better, long-term parking permit or parking system for downtown.
Ken.
Yeah. My first house in Mountain View was on the corner of Evelyn and Bush, directly across the street from the railroad station. And we gave up all hope of trying to find parking in front of our house ever because of that situation. Our second house was on Mercy Street, which is about six blocks away from Evelyn and the train station. And we never had a problem parking in front of our house, but I was just walking precincts recently, and I walked past my old house, I noticed there was a tremendous amount of cars parked on the street during the business day. And I found out from one of the neighbors that this is spillover from Caltrain. I mean, it's going all the way down to Mercy Street now. So clearly, there is a problem. I can tell you, the consensus of people who live closer to the train station, they are not happy with this permit system at all. I will defer to Jim on this particular issue because he's quite outspoken. But I think that there will be some lessons learned, and the city is going to evolve this process. Anytime you have a free resource like parking, you're going to have people use it until it's no longer free, and then they will find other alternatives. So a parking permit system downtown is probably going to make sense, a full-time for residents. Paid parking downtown will likely end some of the congestion. And getting the employees of the restaurants further away from the downtown, so people who patronize the restaurants will be able.
Ellen?
I'm sorry.
Great. So I want to try to take a positive spin, which was that we're lucky that downtown is thriving as much as it is. We've had a variety of new businesses come in, new restaurants, and so it's, I think, even busier than when we were looking at this parking permitting process, you know, downtown parking a year ago. So, you know, that's the positive there. I think something that the pilot program, that will stem from the pilot program is some best practices. So, especially best practices for Mountain View. So the feedback from the residents, as Ken mentioned, as Jim I'm sure will mention shortly, is really important. I also think the city's enforcement time limits for parking downtown will also be helpful. I know that that was something that was discovered that was something that was, needed some improvement.
Jim? You've been waiting patiently, I see. I'm gonna limit you to a minute, so go.
Okay, so I disagree with most of what's been said. I was actually at the city council meeting when this first came up, and they weren't even talking about this. This had to do with moving the farmer's market, and then this came up as a side issue. And then when it came up and it went to staff, staff recommended that we wait a year before implementing any type of paid parking, and the council just overrode it. So right from that point, I was really, I knew that they weren't going to be able to put in place a good program. The other problem with that is that we were never able to establish a baseline. So we don't know what the problems would have been with Levi Stadium without having the paid parking, so that we could then take the logical steps needed to address them. And those are the things that I think have been the main issues. And also, there are two new offices that were built in downtown that will also aggravate the problem. One, a block from my house, I live in Old Mountain View, and I have people coming to my door still today complaining about this paid parking and having signs that don't make any sense and the ragged enforcement and everything else. So I think it's been a disaster from beginning to end.
And you get to follow that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to follow that one. We've been talking about parking for as long as I can remember, both in downtown as well as throughout the city. And as I've been walking, getting to talk to more people, it's a topic that comes up over and over and over. And it's really difficult to hear people say that they are no longer going to downtown Mountain View because they can't find a parking space. That's very concerning to me. We have a lot of great businesses there, and we need both residents and visitors to be able to frequent those businesses. And for most of them, they need a place to park their car. So I would like to revisit the city's parking standards. We have been decreasing the amount of parking on new development, which I have not been supportive of. And there's been a lot of residents who said the problem with that is it spills over into the residential neighborhoods. So let's take a look at the parking standards. Let's add capacity in downtown, and let's also work with Caltrain to get more parking there.
Two words, community shuttle. With that, we are going to do another short break. We'll be right back with the 2014 Mountain View City Council candidate debate.
KMBT 15 has been serving the community since the late '70s and became a nonprofit community media center in the early '80s, bringing you local television programming from local volunteers. KMBT Community Media is located right here in the heart of Silicon Valley. We provide hands-on training, equipment, and airtime to our users to build community and empowerment through the expression of media. Our youth camps support hundreds of students yearly and allow their voices to be heard. KMBT has well over 100 volunteers of all ages who come into our studio each and every month to produce local programming. Programming ranges from talk shows on community issues, cooking shows, local artists, magazine, news programming, and live entertainment, and much, much more. We cover over 100 sporting events, including football, softball, baseball, volleyball, and basketball. We also cover local events like the Art and Wine Festival, Veterans Memorial Day, and the Spring Parade. KMBT provides coverage of local elections, debates, and candidate statements. We offer something for everyone, whether you're a youth, adult, senior, a nonprofit business, or even a for-profit business. So why is KMBT important? Because it's programming like this that brings a community together. We also provide full hands-on training for all ages in studio production and fieldwork, graphics, editing, and an understanding of media in a world surrounded by noise. So we ask, the next time you turn on your television or you want to support an important cause, think KMBT 15, your local community television station, bringing the community together through all forms of media. Support community media and television today.
And welcome back to our live coverage of the 2014 Mountain View City Council Candidate Debate. Now, the next question, and not all of you have to answer it, but it'll be interesting to know what your answer is. Each of you have indicated goals you'd like to accomplish if elected. However, it takes a majority vote on council to push anything through. How will you work with fellow council members to accomplish your goals? Can you give an example where you've been able to do this with another board or commission or group that you've worked with? Take a minute, think about it. I'm not gonna let you go first, Ken. Don't go, Mercedes.
So, yeah, I think a lot of the things that I proposed are values that are already part of Mountain View City Council. It's just really expanding on them. And I haven't heard much opposition to any of my proposals, like more STEM programs for children, more after-school programs, more collaboration with our corporate residents to create pathways to jobs, and more educational opportunities for all sorts of residents. And I have proven experience doing it, working in a highly polarized political climate such as the House of Representatives. I've been able to reach across the aisle and work with Republicans. We're all pretty much, you know, of the same mind on many issues and work together on legislation. So I have proven experience working with others and coming to consensus.
Ken.
Yeah, so I joined the Human Relations Commission with a purpose, and that was to develop what eventually became known as the Civility Roundtable Discussion Series. But at the time, it was nothing. It was just an idea of, we, sometimes Mountain View citizens don't necessarily agree on something. In fact, this is a problem that we see across the country through political polarization. And so I wanted some type of a city-sponsored event that brought people out of their homes to talk about these things. And getting that through the HRC is something that they had never done before. And the HRC had a very fixed mind on what it stood for and what it did. So getting that through was not exactly easy, and then it had to be approved by council after that, remembering it is a city-sponsored event. But it was eventually done, and it is now a very successful series, and the next one is November 6th, talking about affordable housing in Mountain View.
How did you make that happen?
Well, when I was speaking about my idea, the resistance at first was, "I don't understand what it is you're talking about." And quite honestly, I didn't understand it at first either. I knew I had a goal in mind, but I didn't have an understanding of what it would be. And so engaging the HRC in the conversation and having a collective process was the way that it eventually came about.
Pat, Lenny, Jim, Lisa.
The job I had before I went to work for the Santa Clara Valley Water District was as the Director of the San Francisco Guido Watershed Council. That was a 23-signatory organization. So a lot of things came up that people had really disparate ideas about. But what I've found over the years is that the way that you solve the problem of coming to a common solution is you let people talk enough so that you're able to identify what are the shared values. And once you've identified what those shared values are, it's really quite magical. You can figure out what are common things that everybody's willing to work on and go forward with that. And you build with smaller, a small success to start with, and you build on it. And you become a community. And it really works, and I know it worked on Planning Commission, and I feel confident it will work on the city council.
Lenny.
Yeah, I think the key to the synthesis of diverse perspectives and interests is to understand and respect each of those diverse interests. Not what's in common at first, what the difference is. So I've facilitated in recent years several national roundtables that involve the Defense Department, other federal agencies, environmental groups, and the private sector to promote renewable energy on or near Defense Department facilities. We've been very successful once we understood what the concerns of each person at the table was.
So I don't have a lot of public sector experience, but in the private sector, I've had to basically work with serving customers, and those customers can have very stringent requirements, and sometimes they can be very demanding. And so a lot of times, you'll have different teams that need to work together in order to solve the problem for that customer. And you'll have one person that's a focal point that will create the project plan, and on several occasions, I've done that. I've been able to create the project plan, talk with the different groups to make sure that they can get their individual pieces done, and then pull it all together and then present that to the customer and make sure that the customer is satisfied with what, that their requirements have been fulfilled. And if not, then you go back and you start that process again and make sure that it's refined until you get the end product that you want.
Lisa?
Yeah, in both private industry as well as on the Planning Commission, I think it's been very important to have everyone have a shared understanding of information. So let's get the facts out and have everyone have sort of the same base. And then also seek to understand the different perspectives, so that we can address any issues that folks might have. I can think of a time on the EPC when we were talking about shared parking at San Antonio Center. And I was the one who led the charge to get the EPC to recommend to the city council that we modify the existing precise plan, just in case there was a delay in the future precise plan for that area, so that the small business that everyone was concerned about had the opportunity to continue on with shared parking. And so to get the information out among the fellow EPC commissioners by asking staff, the attorney, you know, the different parties to the agreements, you know, I think we came to the conclusion that that was a good thing to do.
Ellen, and then Margaret.
Great, thanks. So the most important thing for coalition building is to listen. And the next part of that is to educate, because once we, you know, whoever I'm discussing anything with, whether it's in my professional life or on the Planning Commission, I need to understand why. Where are you coming from? And help me understand, and then let me try to help you. For a practical example, we were looking at Harb's Car Wash, and we're talking about the affordable units there with the density housing bonus law, and that it would be five units. And I spoke up at the beginning of 2014 when it first came forward, and spoke up again a couple weeks ago, that whether it's five units or four, that's five more families that can afford to stay in Mountain View, and I really think that that's important. And once I was able to give some metrics in terms of how, with the loss of redevelopment, with the lack of funding from the federal government, we really need more than ever to make sure that those opportunities are there and push that as a city.
You've been waiting, go for it.
I had the opportunity in the private sector to work on a project that really actually pulled together people from all over the world to try to achieve one goal. And that, to me, was the biggest challenge. It was looking at different perspectives from different cultures, and you realize that often those different perspectives give you some new ideas. And so the idea of listening and engaging people and understanding the thought process, you may not always come to the ultimate goal that you want, but you can come to a compromise, and then you understand how you get there. So by working through each of these countries and these areas where I had the privilege of working, I believe that I have that great ability to listen and to come forth with the best solution for the overall community in this case.
So how do you handle the flip side of that? I mean, that obviously with every vote, someone's going to be happy and someone's not going to be happy. What are some recent things that have been passed by council that maybe you are not a fan of and might even potentially want to try to change should you be elected? Don't make me call out some of you, because I know. Pat.
Well, I don't know, just a couple years ago, when the general plan was passed, I had worked to try and get housing allowed in the North Bay Shore. And we worked through Sustainable Mountain View, and it didn't, it just, the time wasn't right, it didn't pass. So I wasn't happy about that, but there were lots of other things about the general plan that were excellent. So I could feel like I could be supportive of it as a whole. But now, I think I might have another opportunity at that issue, and I'd like to take it.
Anybody else?
Yeah. I mean, the key to me is involving the community. What I do is I don't just go speak at council meetings, I engage people and have them come too. And I intend to do that when I'm on the council. We're fortunate to have a relatively direct democracy here in Mountain View. The average citizen can go to the council meetings and speak, and we should do that. And if necessary, we go to the initiative or referendum if the council doesn't listen.
I have a question for Lenny. Would you go to a referendum if you were a city council person and didn't get your way on some of these issues that you would now consider a referendum?
Probably not for things that come up in the transition period. Things that the current council might adopt between now and are taking office, I might.
Anybody else? Come on, Jim.
One of the things I didn't agree with was the ban on plastic bags. And it's not because I want to see more pollution everywhere. The thing is, I think it was kind of disingenuous that, first, they called it single-use plastic bags. I reused those plastic bags hundreds of times. I keep them stored so that I can reuse them. They're very good for, actually, I wrote 101 uses for them. So they are handy to have for things when, for instance, just like groceries, if you have meat that you need to carry, if you have it in a paper bag, that blood can seep through and the bag breaks. And when you're carrying everything from Safeway to downtown Mountain View like I am, you don't want to have that happen. So I think using police powers for something like that is a mistake, and I would have rather seen it go to a vote so that at least people have a say in it and not just have it imposed. That was my issue.
Jim, do you reuse bags that you see blowing down the street? Jim, do you reuse bags that you see blowing down the street?
I do see those, but I think that...
Do you reuse them?
I'm sorry?
Are you able, do you believe in reusing them?
Well, actually, sometimes I do. I can use those for trash. If there's one in front of my house, I pick it up and I use it for trash.
Anybody else?
I think it's important to understand that we, not everybody gets their way in a vote. And as a taxpayer, I'm very unhappy with some of the uses of my, on a national level, some of the uses of my tax dollars. I don't agree with it, but that's part of democracy. So we have this type of issue that Jim just brought up. If you don't like something, work to change it.
Let's move on to another topic. One of our, there's a phrase that has a lot of different meaning depending on how you use it, and that's "community benefit." So one of our audience members, Don Ball, has posed the following question. In relationship to development projects, of course, there's going to be a lot of development in Mountain View, how do you define community benefits as it relates to that? What are the community benefits that you want developers to be able to provide as a part of being able to build here? Lenny.
Yeah, I think we're still struggling with that. There are three ways to look at it. One, there are those activities like building roads in a subdivision that are intrinsic to the development. That should not be considered a community benefit. There are mitigations. So if you build a whole lot of homes or offices and you block up an intersection with traffic, that's mitigation. The community benefit is something that you reward somebody with extra floor space if they're doing something extra for the community. And we're starting to define that a little bit more carefully than we did before, and we need to.
Do you have an example of what you feel like should be part of that definition?
Well, for instance, if we want to get a bicycle overpass over Central Expressway between Mayfield Mall area and the San Antonio area, there's a tunnel there and it's not adequate. Some of the developers in the San Antonio area could contribute to that in exchange for additional floor space.
Mercedes. So the three important priorities for me as far as community benefits are concerned are affordable housing, open space, and bike and pedestrian lanes. And I'll just stop there. Quick and easy.
Interpret that how you will.
Well, in reading these precise plans, I found this concept of community benefit really confusing too. So I'm glad it's been brought up as a question, and I do think we have to have a, you know, a discourse about it. It seems like most of the things that are listed as community benefits are onsite improvements to the facility that would maybe provide more community access, like public space or that sort of thing. And every once in a while, there's an off-site one that's kind of added in. It seems like it's almost as an afterthought, like the, you know, the fund that you're talking about, Lenny. And I think we need to talk about it much more broadly and not think about these primarily as community benefits on that specific site. I think we need to consider what the community would benefit from the whole community, that neighborhood, and, you know, throughout the community. So I'd like to broaden that.
So how high on the priority list does that definition need to be made, knowing that there's so many projects in the pipeline and more to follow after that?
Well, you know, I think we, again, we're struggling as a city to understand how we want to define community benefits. In some cases, I think that, for example, bike and pedestrian infrastructure, I think should be part of the original plan and should be contained within the development plans for that area. Community benefit as, I think, Lenny, you said that when they do something, when they want to get an extra benefit, an extra, higher density, a higher fire rating for the, to allow more space to be utilized, a higher number of floors in the structure, they would then contribute something that would go off-site. And that's more of what I think should be the norm, is something that's not necessarily off-site. If it's within the site, the things that we are expecting to have should be there as contained within the plans of the developer. So we may have to rethink some of the things that we do, because, you know, 20 years ago, a bike path was not a normal thing. Now it should be a normal part of a road. When you put in a road and it's part of a connector, there should be a bike path, and it should be the responsibility of the developer to put that in. It shouldn't be something extra.
Would some of those community benefits been identified through the general plan process when there were all these, you know, these meetings where community members were invited out to talk about certain things? Is that an avenue of figuring out what some of those things are as opposed to trying to figure out from scratch what those things should be? Margaret, then we'll head over to this side.
I think we have had numerous discussions about community benefits, and I think we are, we are looking at areas outside of the particular project where that would be a community benefit, because not always is there the space around a project that you could have a new park or, you know, something that would really benefit the overall community. And in addition, I would like us to see some of the outstanding projects that we have, the community capital improvement projects that we have, because we're trying to maintain older projects that we really need to improve on. So I would like to see a developer come in and then make a contribution so we could get our Rengsdorf Park, you know, maintained and back into the shape that we want it in. So, you know, I think that we have opportunities in a number of different areas that we could incorporate that.
So that brings up an important point, though, is as council members, at what point do you say, this is what we want, as opposed to waiting to see what the developer wants to provide? Go over here to Ellen, Jim, Lisa.
Sure. So you brought up the general plan, and since that's been completed, we've been looking at the different change areas. And as part of the precise plan, we've been talking about putting language in there in terms of community benefit. So not just, we've also been looking at it project-by-project basis. But the definition we've kind of come up with over this last year, in 2014, is talking about significant community benefit that goes above and beyond, that benefits all Mountain View residents. So for example, if we're looking at the San Antonio change area, if we were talking about incorporating open space and having a park there that would be accessible to all residents, not just those that live in the San Antonio area. So that's just one example we've been exploring.
Jim?
So I was going to say something similar. So community benefits are more of details, and you wouldn't put details like that in the general plan, because the general plan is a longer-ranging vision document. You do want to have it more in your precise plans, and then also, again, on the project by project basis, because you don't know how the needs of the community are going to change over time. Also, you don't know if those particular projects are even going to go through. Sometimes a project's proposed, and it runs into trouble, either financial or whatever, and then that project gets pulled, or maybe the community says, well, we don't want this project here, and so that project doesn't get built. So you have to determine what benefits you want based on what's needed in the community at that specific point in time, and then try to work with whatever developments are going on then to try to access those.
Lisa.
Yeah, so I think the reason we call it a community benefit is because it's supposed to benefit the entire community as opposed to an individual project. So I look at community benefits at things such as addressing some of our transportation issues, addressing our lack of park space in certain areas. And keeping a list separate from the general plan or the precise plans of all the different things that we would like to do, and they will change over time. So I think it's something we revisit. And we have the developers contribute to either do it themselves, one of the projects, or contribute funds to help fund one of the projects.
Jim?
I was actually going to say a very similar thing to what Lisa just said. When it refers to traffic issues, especially in the impacts of the development on the existing roads and so forth, I find that to be one of the highest value, community benefits. Parks and so forth would probably follow after that. So I don't really have anything substantial to add.
But does anyone have a pet community benefit? You're all being very PC, and I totally appreciate it. But I also know at the same time that you all know that there is something that you want to see, whether it's a benefit to a certain group, not necessarily the whole community, because you can't make the whole community happy.
Well, let me just add to what I said. Anytime you have a developer, it's a tax on the development. So the question is, is the city responsible for doing these things itself and being responsible for raising the revenue to do these projects? Or is it like, hey, this would be really nice, let's make them do it? And I think that's part of the conversation that has to happen, but I...
Well, my pet project is a school in the San Antonio area. But it's not just a matter of getting the funds, it's also a matter of finding the land for it. And I'm worried that the city's about to adopt a San Antonio precise plan, that any notion where that school might go, we might have offices, retail, and housing built on all the available parcels. But the precise plan does include that as a potential community benefit.
Anybody else? Jim?
So for exact examples of a community benefit, the pedestrian over crossings that I was talking about, that would be something that could be done in a relatively short period of time. Also, lighting on the streets. My street is completely dark. I have to leave my porch light on all night so that people can walk safely on the street. So, you know, even smaller things like that, I think, can really help an awful lot.
I could get one more. One of my things is, we have two major barriers in the city that separate parts of the city. One is the Central Expressway and the Caltrain tracks. It's a dividing line that goes across, I believe it's like six miles long, there's like five, six crossings. Wisman, Stevens Creek Trail, Castro-Moffett, Shoreline, Rengsdorf, and then sort of the San Antonio with the tunnel and also that terrible bridge overpass thing that goes over the railroad tracks. That's a major barrier in the city. We only have six crossings. Some of those are very, very unfriendly for pedestrians and bicycles. Just like you say, it would be a very nice way of connecting the city to build more pedestrian and bicycle overpasses at various intervals across that thing. The same thing, it goes with 101. 101 is a barrier on the north end of town, cutting off North Bay Shore. We have, I think, two right now, two pedestrian, is that right, or just one? I can't, oh boy, Stevens Creek Trail and the one over on Permanente Creek. We should use, have more of those. And by the way, a pedestrian and bicycle overpass is on the order of $10 million, whereas if you build a car, a car bridge, cars and trucks and buses go over, it's on the order of $100 million. So there's, it's a major difference in cost. Ones, yeah, they're both expensive, but one's really expensive, one's less expensive. So anyway, that's...
So we're going to go on to one last question quickly before we start to do the wrap-up. I know you have a lot to share. So last but definitely not least, right now, current City Council is mulling over the minimum wage, raising the minimum wage in Mountain View. Are there any of you, I would like to first hear from those who support an increase in minimum wage, and want to see if any of you don't support it. We'll go Margaret, Pat, Jim, then Mercedes.
I definitely support the minimum wage increase. And I really would like Mountain View to take a stand. They're talking about aligning with San Jose. I'd like them to step up and match Seattle with $15 an hour. And the reason for that is we want to maintain the diversity in our city. And one of the ways we can start to work at that is by paying the people who are part of our community, and they provide great services to us, and I think they should be paid in kind for, you know, that service.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. Got to keep it going.
Is that me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I too agree that we need to raise the minimum wage. I think it's one of those things where, you know, it will raise all the boats, and we need to do that. The people who provide our services deserve to have enough money to live decently, and this is one way to do it. I also think that there's no reason why we have to, it would be nice if all the communities around here raised the wage to Seattle's, but if they're not going to do that, there's no reason why we have to match San Jose.
As far as the minimum wage, I tentatively support it because I feel it's, again, like rent control. It's a Band-Aid solution that it works for a short period of time, but then after that, people are in the same boat. I worked for minimum wage for 10 years, and during that time, I experienced a couple of different raises in minimum wage. It didn't help my situation. Also, if you raise it too much, I talked to one of the small business owners downtown, and he said he can absorb $11 an hour, but if you put it to 14 or 15, that'll put him out of business. So we have to be sensitive to the small businesses that we want to keep in town, because only the larger employers will be able to absorb the shock of raising it such a great amount.
Lisa?
Yeah, I do support raising the minimum wage, and I think it is important to consider what the surrounding community is doing. We certainly don't want to disadvantage our businesses by making their costs higher. And I think we're seeing now where a lot of businesses have the, you know, help-wanted signs out, because other communities have raised their minimum wages, and so workers are going there. So we need to be very careful about the impact on our businesses.
Is there a trade, and this is the beginning of the last point about this, is that something to consider, is the trade-off of, okay, Mountain View offers $15 minimum wage, but now that restaurant that employs 20 people now employs 10, because they have to absorb...
That's just not the history of what's happened, the one the minimum wage has risen. People always say that. You study it, it doesn't happen.
But is that message coming across to the everyday person? The everyday person is hearing that first argument and not necessarily hears the reality of it.
And that's something that we need to do better as a community, is get the message out there to the small business owners and also nonprofits, because our nonprofits provide essential services for many needy people. We have to kind of alleviate that fear that they're going to go out of business or they're not going to be able to pay their employees. Lenny's right. Studies have shown that increasing the minimum wage is actually good for business and good for employers, employees. And I believe that we should increase the minimum wage. Berkeley increased their minimum wage to over $12 an hour, and I feel like we need to be the leader on having a good minimum wage in Santa Clara County. And one thing that I'm adamant about is also building in a cost of living increase into it, so it will go up as inflation and cost of living goes up.
And I'm going to have to stop us there, but you could take this conversation to your constituents as we continue to campaign. And for those of you who said that the communication needs to be better as far as this topic is concerned, should you be elected, I will be one of those people looking to see if you're going to those small businesses and making sure they understand what it really is about. So with that, we will start with our closing remarks. You each have a minute, a little bit more if I'm feeling generous, to close with us and those of us that are watching you tonight. We will start with Margaret on this end, and we will end with Lisa. Margaret.
Thank you. I am the best-qualified candidate because not only of the long residency, but because of the vision I have for Mountain View. I want to make sure that we look at the amount of commercial and housing that we are building right now. And I think we need to reflect if that is really enough or too much. We need to look at, can we sustain that over time? The transportation is another issue. And the other very important issue to me is water conservation. All of those things, we want to improve and take a step forward. I think because of our precise plans, we are in a position to really now look at the facts and then be able to move forward in a very thoughtful and controlled way. So when you vote for number seven on November 4th, you will be voting for Community Commitment Capriles.
Thank you. Lenny?
This is a pretty good bunch of people. Articulate, competent, history of community service. We agree on more than we disagree on. So the issues that really are important in this election are those that pertain to jobs and housing, the ones I've been organizing on. And I think Mountain View needs to set a goal for not letting the jobs, housing, and balance get worse. And we should apply that in Wisman, apply that in San Antonio, and above all, in North Bay Shore, where we're experiencing one of the greatest explosions of employment in human history. Five of us support housing in North Bay Shore, four of us don't. So I not only want to get elected myself, I want you to elect three council members who understand the importance of making it possible for the people who work in North Bay Shore to live there and walk and bike to work. That's the best way to solve our housing problem, it's the best way to solve our transportation problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Okay, this is Greg, and I'm going to just basically go over my three policy priorities. Housing, we need to establish a better balance between housing and jobs in the city. You know, Lenny has made a very articulate statement there. We also need to work very hard at getting housing for the working class, the lower-income working families in the town that are being pushed out. We need to work very hard at that, because the federal government and the state government are backing out of those programs, and we need to step it up at the city level. Transportation, we need to move away from a car-centric transportation network to one that's more balanced between cars, bikes, pedestrians, handicapped, and transit. And then with parks, we need to take every single opportunity we can to build or to acquire new parks, and even small parks are beneficial. So we need to even get small pocket parks or mini-parks or whatever will even benefit. But again, I want to reiterate, we've got a really good group of people here. It's going to be a tough choice for the voters of Mountain View, but I hope that we get three people that are pro-housing in the North Bay Shore so we can get that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Mercedes?
Well, I'm really honored and humbled to be a part of this really exceptional group of people. And my background has prepared me for this role. I understand the pressures and am proven to make good decisions. I've been endorsed by Mike Honda, Congressman Mike Honda, by County Supervisor Cindy Chavez, by the Santa Clara County Democratic Party, and many others. But at the end of the day, what's really important for me is what's important to you, to ask you what you think about our city issues, to be your voice, and to make sure your views are heard. I respectfully ask for your vote to make Mountain View an even better place to live. I won't let you down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat?
I'm Pat Showalter, and I'm one of the candidates who does think that building in the North Bay Shore would be advantageous for lots of reasons. I'm the only civil engineer running. I've lived in Mountain View for 30 years, and so I certainly am very familiar with it and just, and call it home and love it. I learned a tremendous amount about our local government through nine years on the Planning Commission, and I've also been very, very involved in many organizations like the League of Women Voters and the Conservation Voters. And I'm endorsed by Joe Semidium, Anna Eschew, and Rich Gordon. I'd love your vote. I'm number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg?
I am a native of California, but before I moved to Mountain View, I have earned an MBA from the Crayton Graduate School of Management at Purdue University with a concentration in information systems, which brought me here to Silicon Valley, where I met my wife, which led us to setting down Mountain View 16 years ago, my daughter was born, and 13 years ago, my son. Also 13 years ago, I changed careers and became a family financial planner for Morgan Stanley. Today, I manage nearly the same amount of money as the entirety of the Mountain View city budget. And if people can trust me with their money for investment, then you can trust me with your tax dollars. I intend to keep Mountain View a AAA-rated city. And I mentioned before that I participate in 10 Mountain View-based organizations, which represent the youth, schools, arts, neighbors, and so forth. And a side benefit from that is that I have developed quite an impressive list of Mountain View leaders who have endorsed my campaign. But at the end of the day, there's only one endorsement that I want: yours. I humbly ask for your vote this year.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thanks. I'm your champion. I, like all of you, am thinking about Mountain View's future and thinking about the pragmatic, practical ways as we grow and we change. Mountain View is my home and has been for three generations of my family. I'm invested, my roots are here. I will raise my family here. And as your council member, I will listen to you, be fair, and collaborate to make the best decisions for Mountain View and residents. I tackle the issues we face related to growth, affordability in the city, economic development, transportation and infrastructure firsthand on Planning Commission. And I'll use this practical leadership for you along with my public sector experience. I appreciate your time and your consideration tonight. I'm number nine on your ballot. Please visit ellenkemy.com to learn more about me and my endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Jim?
This election is about leadership, and I was the first candidate to talk about affordable housing, about preserving neighborhoods, about parking and traffic issues. And I'm the only candidate that has been with the milk pail from the beginning, and I want to make sure that we preserve that. I also am for the housing in the North Bay Shore. I think it's very important that we add more housing and have less office. And as far as having roots, the roots of my campaign are right here in Mountain View. I have endorsements from residents, from small business owners, and the people that volunteer for my campaign are all from here in Mountain View, nowhere else. So I want to represent you, and I hope that you'll give me that opportunity on November the 4th. So please go to electneal.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa?
So it was a pleasure to be here tonight. I like the different format of this forum, so thank you. I'd like to highlight what differentiates me from the other candidates. I'm currently serving my fifth year on the city's Environmental Planning Commission, so I'm very current on land use, transportation, the other topics we're talking about. I've been the chair and the vice chair of the EPC. I have a track record on the EPC of listening to residents and businesses alike and of championing issues and of pushing very hard to get high-quality development here in Mountain View. It's a good fit with the character of the existing area. I'm the founding president of a large neighborhood association, the Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association. I'm the only candidate that has been endorsed by the three outgoing city council members, so they know I can do the job. And most importantly, I'm endorsed by many, many residents throughout Mountain View, which feels good, because I've been working with them for many, many years, both as Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association as well as on the EPC. And I'd appreciate your vote on November 4th. I'm Milwaukee number eight on the ballot. Thank you.
You guys have some interesting catchphrases with your placing on the ballot. I'm glad that you all came tonight to be a part of this special live televised debate. I'm glad to see a lot of cross-conversation happening, glad to see some disagreements, but friendly disagreements, which is good, because three of you are going to have to work with each other, beginning next year with the four council members that are still there. So thank all of you for coming out tonight. Thank you so much to our studio audience. Thank you to all of you who are watching tonight and submitted questions. And thank you for watching. Remember to vote on Election Day, which is November, lucky number four. And thank you again for watching. This is Alicia Crank for KMVT. Have a good night.